Who hear you by the way?
What in the Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting, we're gonna start our meeting with proposing to regions. I'll ask Lisa to start us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, taken to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting of October fourth, twenty twenty-three. We go through the attendance. I'll start on Zoom. We have Commissioner, we have Commissioner Godu is meeting with us via Zoom in South Carolina or North Carolina? I think it's South Carolina. Catherine Mann, Robin Burner, we have Joe Gates, and we have Michelle Nick. Yeah, I said that right. Yeah, we have Lisa. How do you say your last name?
Chiavonti.
Chiavonti?
Yes.
I know how that feels when people mispronounce it. Leila, Commissioner Foil, and myself. And we're gonna start the meeting with RFP openings and awards.
So the first RFP opening we have is access control additions. And I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Motion been made.
You're muted, Commissioner Godu.
Yeah, Commissioner Godu.
Maybe.
He's been unmuted. And seconded, is there discussion on the motion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Godu, just raise your hand if you wanna get my attention. So on the posted meter release.
I move to authorize the Chair of the Board of Commissioners to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Motion been made. Seconded, was there any discussion? None on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Colonel?
Yes.
I vote yes. Award for the multi-building vehicle.
I move to award the budget for more than ten thousand dollars, not to extend seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second.
Motion's been made. And seconded, is there any discussion in the motion?
Just seems like they came in right about it. They have very reputations. And we got a couple bids, which is always good because then we know. A replace.
So on the motion, Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
We're onto the consent agenda. In your packets, we have the weekly recruitment report.
Thank you.
I don't know, any, any of the Commissioners want to make any statement about that or comments?
Nope.
Jude, what's up?
Jude, go ahead. I just wanted to let you know that we, we have to test the fire alarm system in the nursing home, and it's done on the first Wednesday of every month. So you heard that one announcement. There'll probably be three alarms, ground floor, first floor, second floor. And then you'll hear the announcement again. Just so you know, everything's fine. It's just, we always do it on the first Wednesday of every month, and it didn't occur to me to reschedule it.
Okay, no worries. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Yeah. So it's not like the House of Representatives where they pull the alarm and we gotta run out. All right, so no comments on the recruitment report. I will make, go ahead.
Go ahead. You can go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, you know, I noticed that we're really kinda making inroads with the exception of nursing, but that's understandable because we know that the travelers pay big money. And so that's gonna be a long-range, a long-term issue that's we're gonna have to keep working on. But everything else seems to be, we're making inroads, and I'm really happy to see that. Commissioner Foil?
I was really excited to see the master plumber, the hiring of the master plumber. That's a really big, an important role. I, I think to your point, Commissioner Chirachello, that we are seeing that uptick, and thanks to everyone in, you know, the collaboration between HR and the various departments. And hopefully, we just continue to make that progression. So, yeah, we have some, a number of new COs coming on and things like that.
That's good. For the record, we have Kathy Stacy that's joined us on Zoom, so I'll make sure that we get her in the minutes. On the, the next thing is a surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty-eight, the Sheriff's Office approval.
I move to approve a surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty-eight, eight A, and declare eight computers and twelve cell phones surplus with the items to be properly disposed of.
Motion's been made. And seconded, is there discussion?
I just have some discussion. What do we do with those cell phones? There's like, they're iPhones. Can you?
We, we usually, we usually offer them up if any of the employees want to take them. We paid ninety, when, when we got them new, we only paid ninety-nine cents for them. But most of them have issues where they don't hold the charge very long, or, you know, Apple's kinda notorious for clocking down the speeds on phones as new generations come up. So we usually just offer them if the employees want them. Some of them get them for their kids to turn on as, as phones, or just use as a mobile device with Wi-Fi.
Fantastic. I just didn't know if, if there isn't, you know, the secondary part, if the employees don't take them, could we donate them? I know there's like, for people with domestic violence, sometimes there's, you know, that they have phones that are sort of burner-type phones. I don't know if that's an option for donation.
If we had any remaining, we'd be more than willing to do something like that. So we, we would reach out to one of those organizations.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, awesome. For the record, the Sheriff, the Sheriff's Office, Major Bastrow, the Sheriff of Sales have joined us as well. I acknowledge them, obviously. Any other discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
I vote yes. The ten five twenty-three accounts payable list.
I move to approve the accounts payable list total of three million, three hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and fifty-four cents.
Second.
Motion's been made. And seconded, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
I, I object to the one-point-five-million-dollar warrant from Harvey Construction that doesn't contain adequate backup. There's not enough detail. There's no, there, there's only one invoice that's listed there. We have a bunch of line items that are being paid, and no backup to understand what all those line items are. You guys have heard me talk about this before. And I'm not going to support this accounts payable list for that reason.
Right? So Chuck, can I ask you a question? Are you comfortable with all of the backup material that you've said?
There were sixty-some-odd pages of, of backup. All the con, all the subcontractor payment requests were included, and they were tied out to a list that Harvey provided with backup to their payment request. There was one I am, I did ask Doug Jaffe about. That was like nine, ninety-eight-hundred-twenty dollars. Because I was down near the section where there are subcontractors, and he said that that actually wasn't for subcontractors. I think it was for, for some, I can't remember where it is. It was more like they had gone out to, like, just not, just a regular vendor and purchased something. It wasn't a subcontracted work per se. And that's why that was not included as a payment request from a subcontractor.
So my question, so my question is, because this is your job, obviously. If I had a finance, you're very well respected and known about this. You're comfortable with all the documentation that you've received on this, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's how, you know, how construction firms bill on these things. Oh, it's for insulation, I believe. That's the ninety-eight, a hundred dollars.
And then that's consistent with in terms of, I mean, the one thing we are also getting is the, all of the minutes, the meetings, and which gives us updates about the progress of work, which we can easily track and see relative to the invoices that are coming in. And Jude, I, you know, Jude, I don't know when you sleep, given how much, how many things and your attention to detail, but you also feel comfortable with everything. You know, obviously, they're looking over the warrants as well.
I do, yes.
And, I mean, Chuck, your, your brain is incredible. You're like, can narrow down in terms of that level of detail of seeing a nine-thousand-dollar.
I, I will say sometimes it can be a little difficult because on construction ones, when they're doing the payment request, you have to deduct the current period amount they're, they're holding back and, and retainage. And it's, when they do the summary that I'm tying back to, they don't give it net of that, you know, current period retainage amount, because that's really how you get down to the current amount to pay. So I can understand sometimes trying to, you know, tie back to things. It's, it's a little bit more difficult to tie back to that, that on a subcontractor base as far as the current amount to pay.
I know, I wanna note that we have, Lieutenant Henry has joined us on Zoom, and then we have Kathy. I can't really read the legal.
Paul's involved.
Is she in the public or?
She's in there.
There. Okay. Very good. All right. So, yes, Commissioner Godu?
I, I have a question for Chuck, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
Chuck, there were some invoices from Lowe's. Do you have any idea what they purchased?
None of those specific ones. No, but.
There was also an invoice for some steel. Do you know how much steel they bought?
They have not bought much steel. Those, that's only a, a partial from Sturo, if, if that's what you're asking about. The, the bulk of it's gonna come later.
Yeah, forty-eight thousand dollars.
Wait.
I was wondering if you saw the invoice to like, to know how much steel they got for, we bought for forty-eight thousand dollars.
Did Jude know? Maybe Jude knew that.
I mean, Commissioner Godu, the, again, we have a GMP. What we, the auditing process is, we, that there is a, they bid out the steel, there's portions of steel, but we're going to get all of our steel. In terms of the payment, a partial payment for a portion thereof, I mean, I don't think anyone is out there evaluating. There's some trust involved in terms of what's being produced and the, and if the oversight is important, partial, of seeing the building being properly constructed and evaluated. We have, you know, and the secondary backup of the GMP. We have the minutes. We can see what's happening each week and the progress that's taking place. We are reviewing, you know, obviously, to your point, I mean, Chuck has found, he identified a nine-thousand-dollar subcontractor bill that was, he had concerns about, brought to their attention, they explained it. And so what we're seeing is, in the answer, is that there's those checks and balances done. I mean, what is confusing to me is we approve warrants, right, and you're not asking, for instance, what, you know, anything else about any other, I mean, we have a ninety-five-million-dollar budget that we approve payment to, and what we're not, you're not asking for anything else across any other of our annual ninety-five-million-dollar budget except for the warrants for the building, where we have this insurance plan of a GMP. It is, strikes me that this is just like.
But that's how he's getting raised fundraisers. That's really.
This is continuing to be obstruct the process again. And I, I can't emphasize this enough. This just, it all feels like this goes back to the Board's unwillingness to hire Gino Veroni. So it's inconsistent, your application is inconsistent. And, you know.
Right. Are we ready now? We ready? Did you have something else? Go ahead.
Just one final point.
Yeah.
My objection is very simple. We are paying bills, they have line items with dollar amounts, and we don't have invoices. So as a result, we don't know what we purchased. Now, as far as the other warrants, I'm working my way through those. I haven't had an opportunity to see them all. I'm starting to dig into some of that as well. But that's, that's not the issue. The issue here is very simple for me is that when I see an invoice, a, a dollar amount that we're paying out to one of our vendors, they are obligated to give us those invoices, and they're not providing it. And that's the only reason that I'm objecting to this payout. I just wanna be clear. It's a very simple problem. I just don't have the invoices.
Yeah, I, I, I think we're gonna wind it down. I, I personally see this as being a way for you to fundraise for a campaign, is what I see. And you just wanna make your narrative and story.
That's a ridiculous assertion.
Really? Really? You didn't publish a newsletter? But anyway, we're gonna move on. That's exactly what it is. And I, I think we'll move on. So you can do whatever you want.
You wanna call the vote?
Yeah, I'm gonna call the vote on the, on the motion for council payable. So, Commissioner Godu?
No.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. So now we're on to reports. I'll start with Commissioner Foil.
Sure. So we had a really great event on Sunday, which was the All Summers Walk, and the fundraising efforts were excellent. There was a lot of participation. It was really a great showing by Rockingham County, just another example of people rallying together. So that was really nice. Jason is at a conference this week on compliance, which is great. Obviously, we're still struggling with nursing, staffing, and but otherwise, things are continuing to move along, and progress is being made. Over at the jail, the population is a hundred and fifty-three. It has stayed consistent. In about a week and a half, there's, this is some overlap. The county attorney, Pat, is holding a, a forum for the Felonies First, a Felonies First Forum, which is going to be for, invited all the district court prosecutors to attend that. The reason for that is because, you know, sort of to talk about the changing process of felony cases going back to district court. I know we've talked about it a little bit before, but the impact could be, in terms of the impact, it's important that we all gather and discuss this, because there is gonna be an increased impact to the Department of Corrections in terms of the population there, and probably another significant impact for the Sheriff's Department, because I anticipate that transports are going to go way up. And maybe the sheriff can speak to that, because now we're gonna start having probable cause hearings, and they're gonna have to be in person. So I, I think those are the demands on the Department of Corrections and the Sheriff's Department, we can anticipate are gonna go up significantly starting January first. And so, and in terms of finance, it is busy. I mean, sitting here is just, it's remarkable when Chuck talks that he, given the array of things on his plate, that he has in his head the actual amount on specific payments with subcontractors. I feel perpetually like I am just so constantly impressed with all of our department heads and the effort of so many people here and just the both the effort and brain power we have at Rockingham County. And, you know, we talked about, everyone's like, oh, Rockingham is the leaders, but when I sit in these meetings and I, we talk to department staff and department heads, I just am like totally blown away at the calm, impressive, everybody is here, and the effort that goes along with it. That comfort.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Godu?
The weather's wonderful here in South Carolina. That's all I have to.
Very good. We're actually eighty here, so not too shabby here either, but I'm glad you're enjoying, glad you're enjoying your little mini-vacation. I'm gonna echo something with Commissioner Foil, you guys. You know, for three years now, I've also been active in NHAC. As a matter of fact, for the Commissioners affiliate, they named me Vice Chair, second year in. But I participate in a lot of Zoom meetings with the legislative side of things with NHAC. And I see firsthand how other counties treat the department heads at Rockingham County, okay? And to your point, they have a lot of respect for our department heads, because they, in my, in my opinion, they're the best of the best. There's a reason why they keep going to us. You mentioned being, you know, having faith in our department heads. I certainly do. I, I like being a team player. I don't wanna be the negative Nelly in the room, just for the sake of being negative, but I'm gonna echo those comments that you had made with the, with our department heads. That's, that's all of our.
I also don't know when people sleep.
No, they do. And, and it's not just for us. It's really, it's really for the NHAC, the, the county, and the collaboration and the teamwork that we all have, especially when, when the legislative meeting in Concord. You know, we all team up, and we, we all put input in as to how we should affect counties. And again, I, I see it firsthand, and I don't wanna put Chuck on the spot, but I see a lot of times they reach out to Chuck. Okay, because he's very knowledgeable.
You know, all of Kathy's work, I mean, she's, oh my gosh, with the legislative end of things. I mean, she singularly singularly is keeping us apprised of really important legislation. Superintendent Henry, I mean, we could just.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Jason's getting awarded next week. It's like, the list goes on. And Jude, I don't know, like, I, I have.
This is why I keep putting my faith in my department heads, and I continue, I will continue to do so. I don't think there's anything nefarious going on, underhanded going on. But anyway, let's, so I've got Jude, I'm gonna let Jude talk on her department, and Allison's not here, but we have Lisa here. So I'll let them give us a brief rundown of what's going on.
Okay, so you wanna move to the language bank, Department of Corrections?
Yes.
Okay. I move to approve the Acentra, Centria, Community Services Incorporated, Language Bank Services Agreement for Interpretation Services with an annual auto renewal unless either party terminates with no less than sixty days' notice, and authorize the Chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Superintendent of Department.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on motion?
I do.
They get two, so I'm gonna let Commissioner Foil go there. Commissioner Godu, go ahead.
There was a section in this contract that was recommended by, that, from, by Primex that our local attorney reviewed. Has, have we, have we made that review happen? Have we requested a review on those couple of paragraphs?
I know Superintendent Henry's on the, on the call, so I'll let him speak on that.
Yep, we gave them all the, we gave the company all of the reviews from Primex, and they changed what they felt comfortable with. And again, that's why Primax is a recommendation. Sometimes these companies do not change everything. Along with this company, it's only pay as we go. We don't anticipate using it a lot, but we have a lot of people, different languages, and those kinds of things. So it's just pay as we go. It's not something we have to pay all the time.
Okay, my question very specifically was that, in one portion, under governance, governance and indemnification, they asked our local attorney to review it in addition to the Primex review. And my question is, did we do that?
Having, I can just speak, just to respond, having reviewed the contract, I feel comfortable where it's at. I mean, I think what we need to step back from is figure out some, in some instances, like, the last time we had a twenty-five-hundred-dollar contract reviewed because you had some discomfort, Commissioner Godu, with with an indemnification clause, I believe, it cost a thousand dollars to review a contract that the total contract value was twenty-five-hundred. You know, Primex approaches things in a way of, you know, obviously, extreme protection, but that's not necessarily how contracts work, and I think when I reviewed this contract, the level of, I think we're adequately protected. I mean, essentially, they're just offering, this is a service to offer, translating, you know, translation, and I feel, personally, I feel comfortable where it's at, knowing that, you know, Primex take, they did make some modifications. Primex takes a more sort of extreme stance that's not necessarily realistic in the contract law.
Right. Further discussion?
I have a, just, so, Jason, how, do you, do we have a sense of how much this is gonna be, how much we can anticipate spending?
No, we're, we're running to people of multiple different languages. And again, this, this won't come out of taxpayer dollars. This will come out of the, the funds for just the inmates, because it is a service for them. Yeah. Along, along with that, I purchased, which I'm gonna, you know, try is two-language translator devices that we might be able to talk into and do back and forth, which will also has a camera in it that should translate the language. I'm hoping that that works. If that works, then I won't have to use a service at all. So we're gonna, we're gonna pilot that, and then this will be our backup, I hope. But again, this won't hit taxpayer dollars if we have to use it.
And then my other question is, in terms of how many did you, were gonna be under ten thousand, which is why you can go, there wasn't any bid, it's just a.
Yeah, we'll be way under ten thousand.
Okay, that's all. I assume so. I just was, you know, felt the suspenders. Go ahead.
Is there further discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Godu.
I, I, I just wanna clarify that the reason that I asked for the other contract to be reviewed by counsel was because Primex recommended it. The reason I'm requesting that we review this contact, contract is because Primex is requesting it. I, I, I tend to wanna take their advice on, and, and it happens to be the liability section. I, I misspoke earlier. I, I, I just think that we should accept Primex's recommendation when they say that our local attorney ought to review this. That's my, my, that's my issue.
Okay. Further discussion? If not, we're gonna take a vote. So on the motion, let me get to my page here. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
No.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay. Immate administrative transfer?
I move to approve an inmate administrative transfer dated September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three pursuant in New Hampshire RSA thirty-eight B twenty-one, transferring one eighty from Hillsborough County as recommended by the Superintendent.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a discussion on this motion? None on the motion, Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Facilities, NHDES, Opera, Cybersecurity Implementation Grant Program Agreement.
I move to approve the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, Cybersecurity Implementation Grant Program Agreement for the amount of sixty-six thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, and authorize the Chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Excited.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
I vote yes. GBS Associates Incorporated?
I move to approve the GBS Associates Incorporated Ever Source Amendment Acknowledgement at no cost to the county, and authorize the Chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Here are none on the motion, Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Long-term care services?
I move to.
And DC.
Yes. I move to approve the request for forty thousand dollars of additional funding for adult medical daycare services to Easter seals to continue to provide services to Rockingham County residents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Motion made. Seconded, any discussion?
So, I guess my, I mean, these are, again, I think I my concerns, as I mentioned earlier, is that we're gonna run out of money, because what they're asking for is, I mean, our total budget is a hundred thousand dollars. And so I do have some concerns about where we're gonna be relative to overall and how we're gonna, I mean, I think we should support these individuals, but I.
Yeah. I share the same, the same concern. So the way I view it is, we have the budget process. We present our budget to delegation, the delegation approves that. I don't want to bore that. My, my question right here is, it says, you know, request for additional funding. That over and above what's budgeted or not?
No. This.
So it's within the budget?
So, so what happens is each of three organizations are assigned or allocated, you know, forty thousand, forty thousand, and then twenty thousand for Easter seals for the total of a hundred. For the total of a hundred in the line. And then what happens is by default, we support for each Medicaid participant ten dollars per day. So automatic approval, they don't have to come before the board for approval. If they but if they are someone who's slightly over-resourced, they don't qualify for Medicaid, they're in the spend down piece, that's but they still need care. So so that's when these these three uh companies will come to us with requests for these additional care because they're not Medicaid, they're not part of the auto-approved. Amounts. And then you might have some that qualify for other specific brands, but they're still not technically Medicaid as well. And that's like the other third area where um one of the three might come forward for a request. That would be, you know, uh above, again, the default Medicaid approval ones.
So I don't I don't know how the commissioners feel, but they can chime in. Um, I feel that we've got the thought, whatever's in the budget for that particular. Uh, adult daycare, that's where we're at. You know, if we if we think we're gonna do overruns later on, you know, we can always put that when we do the next budget. That's my personal opinion because we've never had this issue since I've been here. This is like a brand new issue. Uh, and my feeling is is that the more we pour into it, and this is no disrespect to Easter Seals, the more they're gonna ask. And so I just think, you know, proper planning is a budget. We have a budget, stay to our budget, and then when we come up to the new budget, if they want to request more, they can let us know that they have additional.
So so if I could, there's one wild card that's out there that we don't know the size of it. But there's that pilot program grant that we that the county got approved for.
Right.
So that we haven't had uh any amount yet. Um, that's that's been approved by governor and council. Um, hopefully that'll be coming fairly soon. Um, or at least I haven't seen it yet. So that could be something that, again, that's. The the model that we're gonna go with was um again, supporting more uh M D C, you know, days and and again, whether it's only these three. Outfits, maybe if there's some other ones in the county, who knows?
Right.
That we overall support getting more adult care uh daycare for our seniors. Um, because we know the need is out there and that would also meet the state's goal of keeping people in their homes instead of coming to a nursing facility. Yeah, so.
I just, I'm so what there and maybe it seems unusual to me that they're asking for payout for the rest of the year. So that's the part that because obviously this could be subject to change in lots of different ways, but so my discomfort with. In the overall scheme, I think we will find a way. To me, I would like to do everything in my power to find a way to make sure we can support. The residents that need that help for to access adult medical daycare and um, you know. Where wherever we need to pull, if we exceed the hundred thousand dollars, then we find it, we can, you know, if we can transfer some money into that line to help people, that's all the better. And then, to your point, take it up with the delegation and increasing that amount for the next next fiscal year. My issue is they're essentially asking us to pay, it's it's October and they're asking for payout for the whole year. Is that?
That's not normal because they're supposed to bill monthly. So that's not, that wouldn't be normal.
Why would we?
All right, maybe Commissioner Godu has done that, but.
No, no, no. So is it I'm used to approve the request of forty thousand dollars? So the request is forty thousand dollars.
I didn't see the request, so I don't.
Yeah.
No, then they're the three outfits supposed to submit monthly bills and it would even include any of these additional ones that were approved by the commissioners. So it shouldn't. There's been no lump sums like that. The only lump sums before I've been with the commissioners have approved.
Right.
Okay, we're we haven't, you know, the three outfits have not spent down on their money. So it's gonna give them five thousand or something like that.
The word of additional funding threw me off, but uh Commissioner Godu, go ahead.
Um, first of all, I'm in a hundred percent support of Easter Seals increasing their program and and helping these folks. Uh, but I too have an issue with where the money is coming from. I don't believe they're looking for a forty thousand dollar payout. I believe they're looking for forty thousand dollars more in their budget. Uh, as they move through the year. And if that's not clear in the request, then we probably should table this and come up with a um. Uh, a a better plan. I don't think we should just vote this down. I think this should be uh looked at from a budgetary standpoint. There are three agencies that were uh that are on this line item, and I don't believe the other two agencies are using their money. Um, because Easter Seals is a little bit more active and they have more availability to help people. And so maybe uh that money needs to be allocated. Away from a couple of the other agencies and towards Easter Seals. In any event, Jason's not with us uh this week. And uh this is under his uh guidance. I think that we should uh ask him to. Help us and him and Chuck to help us provide a uh a a budgetary way of how where we're going to find this forty thousand dollars. I think that we should find it one way or another. Uh, and of course, the grant is a little bit of a wild card, but uh in any event. I think we need to find this money. It's just a matter of we can't be uh we we have to be responsible with the budget.
Um, so do you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table this until next week.
I'd second.
So a motion to table and second, not debatable on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
I'm gonna table this one. We'll we'll discuss it later. All right, uh, creative digital marketing services agreement?
I move to approve the creative digital marketing services agreement for a six-month brand marketing and strategy project for an amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents. As recommended by the senior director of long-term care services.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Foil?
Um, yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're on to Sheriff's Office acceptance of the Edward Burn uh fire memorial justice justice grant, I'm sorry.
I move to accept the award of the Edward Burn Memorial Justice Grant in the amount of thirty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and authorize the senior director of finance to complete the grant acceptance electronically on behalf of the board as recommended by the high sheriff.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
This is pass-through money for uh Portsmouth and Hampton, so that isn't separate and very as well. And what and dairy, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. So on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
I vote yes. Um, okay, so we're on to the department that update. I'm gonna start with Lisa issues, but not going to get everybody to see today. Well, Lisa, take it away.
Okay, hi, good morning. Um, I'm here today representing H R. Allison and Julie are at a summit in Boston. Uh, H R has been busy with our day-to-day tasks. Additionally, we've just completed our um harassment training across the board. We had two paths. We had a path for supervisors and managers, department heads, and then a path for employees um training. We just wrapped that up yesterday, so we're in the process now of going through all the sign-up sheets and looking to see how many more uh makeup sessions we need to. Have to get everybody through that. Uh, so we'll be working on that in the next couple of weeks. We also started working on our annual recognition events. So we have two events that will be held, one at the end of October and one at the beginning of November. For all employees that are hitting their five-year milestones, uh five-year, ten-year, and so on, uh with the county. We are busy uh working on the U K G Pro uh implementation. Right now, we're doing a lot of double data entry into our regular chronos, H R I S, and also into the U K G Pro. Uh, getting ready, shooting for our January one go-live date. Hopefully, we're we're still on target for that. Um. We have a couple of employee relations issues going on, taking up some time, but other than that, we're we're plugging along in our daily tasks and very busy over there.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go to Chuck. Anderson, he's right there.
Um, as I have mentioned before, since it's the month following a quarter end, there's all sorts of the different various uh filings that have to occur as well. Um, obviously, the largest one at the by the end of the month is gonna be the uh the ARPA one. Uh, because that's how many pages that is now. It's it's substantial, so. But uh but also in apparel ones, there's also many different systems doing these filings in as well. Um, for example, the that grant award for the sheriff's office happens in its own separate justice grants system that the department justice has as well. So it's just a another system, so um. But overall, as as Lisa said, um payroll and Ben have been busy with the UKG Pro dimensions, you know, working up for testing things. Uh, with that, um obviously, we're trying to um push and have them UKG individuals work on the uh. The our special concern is that they're a style. Um, as far as that has to be fully completed and tested before we go live, because there is doesn't exactly forgive uh late fees if you don't really have. A good reason for for being a late filer. So um. And as usual, just just very busy on a myriad of items. Obviously, Emily's very busy with grants. Uh, so she's very happy to be working with various departments where she can as far as helping them get grants. She's also already served as a resource to some towns already. As well in the county.
How's she doing?
She's doing well. She's she's she she's very aggressively researching items. Um, there's been some things going on behind the scenes about our two hundred. Forty-four thousand dollar um uh E C B D grant.
Yeah.
Um, so again, that's the one that got freed up that we didn't have the Buy America provisions anymore, so it's gonna make it quite a bit easier. Um, so things have been moving along again on that. There's some delays because of other um. Uh, I I now I will say awardees because they, again, this is like a formula grant. So you're given allotment, but you still have to, you don't automatically get it. You have to go forward hitting certain procedures and some of those ones. Some of those um governments or municipalities or or whatever they were didn't quite hit all those target dates and they're allowed. Uh, some extension times. So things are picking up again on in that area. So. So again, that'll be good news too, because that'll help, you know, take off of some of the monies that, you know, are but our own S L F R F monies were dedicated towards. So so just as usual.
Plugging along.
Yeah, we're looking forward to to, you know, doing the pumpkins again as far as an atrium and doing, yes, yes.
One that, yeah.
H R.
Yes.
All right, so um, I'm gonna go, now go to Sheriff's Office.
Good morning. Um, we did have a conditional offer for a new dispatcher. Uh, we have a couple in the fire right now. Um, I just wanna. Put a shout out to Jason Henry, the superintendent. Um, we are just, we're getting killed on hospital details. I mean, we have two now. It just seems that they're. Getting more and more as time goes by. I gotta agree with Commissioner Foil on uh. The uh transports and more prisoners next year, next year that we're gonna be extremely busy, which we already are extremely busy. But uh we work together very well with the jail downstairs and um they help us out, we help them out. So. Kind of giving a shout out. I mean, we're all in the same boat when it comes to these hospital details. The more these people are coming in, the more that they're getting shit to the hospital and it just uh. You know, with all the stuff that we have to do over here, it just, it it's it's hard sometimes, and I appreciate the superintendent working with us. So we can get this done. And that's it. Have a good week.
And just sure, just an acknowledgement to your team, which is I've seen in a couple, a number of instances where you've helped out police departments. With those hospital details when they're short, you know, around the county, they're, you know, the. Local P Ds are short-staffed on um officers. So uh, you know, your. Department has come through a number of times to help the communities and I've seen that real time. So um, to the extent that you're doing your work and uh. You know, working with the B O C, we, I think it really benefits not just within this depart- the the county, but also the communities in the area. So thank you for that.
That's, I mean, I mean, that's what, that's what I mean, not only, you know, with these hospital details, but we're also doing. I mean, every police agency is short-staffed in this country. Uh, and and you can see it like in even Rockham County where. We're just, we're trying to do as much as we can, even investigations where we get a lot of complicated cases. Um, and just our simple process right now is starting to, I mean, it's it's kicking in, you know what I mean? Uh, we're doing more evictions, we're doing sheriff sales, we're 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 out there, but that's what we do. We try to help out with our our community, be good team players. And thank you for the compliment. I appreciate it.
Right. Um, I know I see Catherine Daniels. I don't know, did she want to add anything at all, Catherine?
Good morning. Uh, just a quick thank you for approving that general this morning. Uh, those three communities really do appreciate those ones coming through, so we're excited to get started with them. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Drew Gates.
Good morning, everyone. I want you to know that um fifty-one thousand and some change grant was by virtue of a ton of work by Robin Burnier. Um, getting us that grant funding. She's working so hard to keep all of us safe in the cybersecurity world, but this goes particularly to water wastewater, which. Might not be a a focus necessarily by every by every I T department. So she's really worked hard on it and she certainly deserves. The um recognition for that. And speaking of recognition, Chuck Nickerson, I must say. Commissioner Foil, you're not the only one who's impressed by his brain. He can answer any question at any time. I go to him regularly. For help and to bounce things off of. He's just wonderful. Um.
Right back at you, Jude. It's like, no question. You can answer.
Um, the delegation chimney was repaired last week. You may recall that we found some issues with it when the roof was replaced. Um, so that's been taken care of. I've fi- finally lined someone up to replace the electrical service over there, so we'll be going forward with. Some of their repairs. I don't have the structural stuff nailed down yet, but I'm trying to find somebody to work on that. Um, we are chasing a hydronic heating system leak down at the jail F and G block. I think we isolated it yesterday to. Uh, an originally installed hot water heat exchanger nineteen eighty. So um it doesn't owe us any money at this point, but we definitely need to get it repaired before winter sets in. So we're we're working hard on that. And then um. Sorry?
Nineteen eighty, the year I graduated high school.
Wow, well, see, it's it's been a little while.
Yeah, thanks for not calling me all day. I appreciate it.
Um, and and the only other thing, we, the master plumber who had accepted. Our offer and we were like so very excited, called yesterday and said, um, never mind. He was looking at more than one position. When he interviewed with us and um despite everyone's best efforts and Autumn has been phenomenal trying to get folks in here for us. He said, um, no, thank you, I'll be declining. So we're back up to seven openings. Um, and that's all I have. Thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you, Drew. Robin?
Good morning, everybody. I have nothing new to report. Obviously, have some new projects on my list and uh excited to get going and getting things going, using some of that grant money. So, thank you.
Very good. Uh, Kathy, Stacy?
Good morning, everybody. Uh, not too much to report. We did have a couple of big transactions, one in uh Portsmouth. And the other one, well, wait a minute.
Okay.
Both important, both of them's a piece. Actually, it's the uh Seacoast News. Yeah, giving over the lease to uh Kane, well, one eleven New Hampshire LLC, which is Michael Kane. Um, that was six-point-one million dollar transfer. The other one's a six-point-nine million dollar cash sale of Summit. It's a bank in Portsmouth. So. Other than that, I mean, as you can see from my numbers, I mean, we're we're slow, we're slow, but, you know, we're working on on uh back projects, which would, you know, making a lot of headway there, so. Thank you very much. That's it.
Yeah, thank you, Kathy. Um, Michelle Schmidt?
Hey, good morning, everybody. Um, I'm doing my best to hold the fort down here while Jason is out, so I'm happy to report he'll be back tomorrow. Um, but nothing really major going on. Um, everything is pretty much status quo. Commissioner Foil stole my Alzheimer's update and. Um, but yeah, no, we're busy with recruitment and retention again. Shout out to Autumn next door. Um, she's great. We actually do have a couple. Of new county staff starting in our next orientation, um but still lots of travelers. Um. But I know there's a lot of good initiatives out there to try to um bring on board our own staff, so um but everything else is going great.
Very good. Thank you, Michelle. Uh, Superintendent Henry?
Good morning. Having some technical difficulties with my computer this morning, so I'm on phone. A couple of things, the next delegation meeting, um you'll see that I'm on the agenda to do a presentation. I want to do it same time with commissioners. It's just a a short half hour um presentation to go over uh our programs, which switched from twenty-eight days to ninety days and how that works uh coming moving forward in the new building. Um, Friday, I'll be in Concord uh testifying or in front of a committee on bail reform, how to.
Friday, I'll be in Concord, uh testifying or in front of a committee on bail reform, how it affects the jail. Um you know, what our costs would be and what the process is and all that kind of good stuff, so I'll be there Friday. We have six people in two weeks uh starting for us. I think there's six uh females. And then another four there in the pipeline behind that, so that is a, that is a blessing for us. Um and the last thing that I have is, I didn't want Chuck's head to get too big, maybe you can answer questions, but I did play golf with him, and it was not so great. Beyond that, I got nothing else.
Okay.
It was her cherry.
Morning.
Morning.
Um annual reports are due. Just sending out that reminder, so for those of you who haven't completed them, please send them in as soon as you can. Um I've been working on cleaning up the media library on the website. There were just so many things in there. Stuff will get posted and just never taken out of the library, so kind of like uh de-clogging the website. Thank you. It's a lot, it's a lot. Um so yeah, I'll be keeping on top of that going forward. Um. I just want to remind everyone that next week's meeting is Thursday at one thirty. A week after that is an AP approval-only meeting, and Monday is a holiday, so the deadline for submissions for next week's agenda is Friday at two.
Well, Chuck's golf might not be good, but your curling skills, when I saw you slide that paper across the table. You missed your calling and curling. So. Background.
All right, thank you, everybody. So now we're gonna, we're gonna go to new business. Does anyone have any new business that they wanted to sell? You have new business? No? Okay. Um so we're gonna go to public comment. If there's anybody from the public, I didn't see any. But why ask, because we have that probably agenda. Does anybody from the public? Uh that we should speak? Anybody? No, okay. So are we going to non-public?
Yeah.
We have a non-public. Okay, so we're gonna go with the non-public. Um I'll let Commissioner Coyle make the motions, and then um I wish everybody a great day.
I move to enter into non-public pursuit of ninety-one eight, form three, section two, regarding personnel matter.
Motion's been made. I'll second it. Um so on the, on the motion, oh, sorry, Commissioner Godu, you probably, you probably seconded it?
Yeah, I was on mute, sorry.
Okay, so so Commissioner, you seconded that. Um on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So uh who will we stay, who staying?
I will be staying.
Anybody? Hey, we're back from the non-public session. I'm gonna go with Commissioner Coyle?
Yes, um so we're, I move to approve that paid administratively for a long-term care employee, BR, for the period beginning. October fifth, twenty twenty-three, as recommended by the Administrator of Long-Term Care Services and Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Um on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. That's motion?
I move to approve a paid administratively for a long-term care employee, CR, for the period beginning October fifth, twenty twenty-three. As recommended by the Administrator of Long-Term Care Services and Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And that concludes our meeting today, folks. I'll end the meeting here. So all voters favorite say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Enjoy your trip, Steve.